I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, reminder to please turn your cell phones off. Indiana, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilor Becker.
Here.
Councilor Scalisi.
Here.
Councilor Quinn.
Here.
Councilor Moschino. Councilor Baker.
Here.
Mayor Bane.
Here.
Councilor Sherman.
Okay, we've all had a chance to look over the minutes for the regular meeting of October fourteenth. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Okay, hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as submitted? Can someone move?
Second.
You have a motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All of us opposed? Okay, moving on to visitors, delegations, we don't have anybody for that tonight. Is there anyone that would like to publicly comment tonight? Okay, moving on to number five, management, MOU Ebenezer, Joanne.
In your packet this evening is an MOU between the city of Rush and Ebenezer. As council may recall, back in about April or May, we came to council. Ebenezer approached us about getting a CBPG grant for ninety thousand for the elevator. We applied for that grant, we received that grant, and so now we're just kind of tying up some loose ends. One of them being we needed to do a memorandum of understanding so that they could state that whatever the grant didn't pay, they would pay that difference. So that's what this is. They have had their board sign off on it, and so they are just waiting for us to sign off on it, and then we can move forward with the next step, which will be the sole sourcing, because that can be a sole source, we've got it approved by the state that it's a sole source. We will sole source that job to the people who originally installed, did the building, installed a hole for the elevator there, they're now working on the other building. So those are the ones that will be that sole sourcing.
Okay. All right, thank you, Jo. Do I have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city of Rush and Ebenezer Lutheran Care Center?
I move we approve the memorandum between Ebenezer and the city of Rush.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
And we have a second, any further discussion? Deanna, roll call, vote please.
Councilor Becker.
Yes.
Mayor Bane.
Yes.
Councilor Baker.
Yes.
Councilor Quinn.
Yes.
Councilor Scalisi.
Yes. Okay, motion is approved. Move on to five B, Mountain Solar Three LLC Estoppel Certificate.
All right, good job, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So the estoppel certificate in your packet, if you're wondering what an estoppel is, according to Investopedia, is a legal principle that precludes a person from alleging facts that are contrary to previous claims or actions. In other words, an estoppel is a document that backs up what you say is true, that you can't go back on the word they run. The reason why this is brought before council, in regard to the solar farm that's happening on the north end of town right now, the initial company that had applied for and received that original special use permit, and you remember last council meeting, we did another one because they wanted to transfer that to another company. But in the midst of them establishing everything up there with the subdivision, the agri park subdivision being what it was, there was some confusion on their end on not only the parcels themselves, but what they saw could be a potential, for example, the land facility to do some type of development or work within the leased area that they were at the time in correspondence and communication with the city of Rush on. And so in order to cover their behind and make sure that the land folks and everybody basically is doing what they were told to do, they drafted many forms of the estoppel, and I've been in continual coordination with Mr. Chapin regarding this, on them revising that so it meets our satisfaction as well. So on that certificate, there's the six points there, and each one of those are pretty self-explanatory. For one, just going over the lease being exactly what it is, the assignment, which that's what we had done last time as well, improvements agreement that no additional development can take place within that leased area, there's no liens on the property, number four, number five, that no unauthorized construction, and then the special use permit is in full force. And so, as I mentioned, we've, on a staff level, we have approved this, and so we're gonna make it a formal action, bringing up the full council tonight. I don't know if Mr. Chapin has any additional comments on that.
Hearing, hearing none.
Okay, thank you, Tyler. Okay, I would look to entertain a motion to either approve or deny the estoppel certificate.
I make motion to approve the estoppel certificate.
Okay, we have a motion approved, there's a second. Okay, any further discussion? Oh, yes, yes. Put your question back to Bo.
Do you have any additional comments?
No, I don't. It's been through, I can't tell you how many versions, and Pivot, or whatever the name of the company is that they're doing business under, the local one for this project is Mountain Solar Three. Wanted all sorts of stuff written into this, that there was no way in the world that the city could certify to this. And so Tyler and I worked on this and came down to these words and said, this is what we give you.
Okay.
And there we are.
Okay, so staff recommends approval for it. Okay.
As drafted and presented, yes.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Deanna, roll call, vote please.
Councilor Scalisi.
Yes.
Councilor Becker.
Yes.
Mayor Bane.
Yes.
Councilor Baker.
Yes.
Councilor Quinn. Yes.
Okay, motion is approved. Next, five C, Mountain Solar Three LLC Special Use Permit Resolution, Tyler.
So the resolution is simply the ratification of the special use permit approval from two weeks ago within the resolution, as well as a revised solar leased area, that we'll hit on the next topic, but that was still up in the air at the time. But this is just confirming the decision that council made last time they made official.
Mr. Mayor, what this is doing is taking this from the name of the entity in which the original special use permit was issued, that is TVA Microgrid Energy, or, what does it, TCA, TCA, thank you, and transferring it to Mountain Three Solar, excuse me, Mountain Solar Three, which is the entity that's gonna operate this. As the operator, the soup needs to be in its name. So that's why we went through the assignment process last week, and it was verbally approved. And as we do with these special use permits, we come back at a subsequent council meeting with the formal resolution adoption.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I would look for a motion to approve the resolution number two thousand nineteen dash twelve.
I move we approve resolution two thousand nineteen dash twelve.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
Second. Further discussion? Deanna, roll call, vote please.
Councilor Quinn.
Yes.
Councilor Scalisi.
Yes.
Councilor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Bane.
Yes.
Councilor Baker.
Yes.
Motion is approved. Moving on to five D, amendment to lease for Mountain Solar. Bo, I shall Bo.
As Tyler mentioned, the legal description of the lease area, of the solar lease area has changed. The reason that changed is that the power line easement on the east side of the property was gonna be impinging on the solar lease area. And so that lease area was moved to the west of it to accommodate that easement, and then to the south to the survey, not the survey, the subdivided property line of that lot to make up for the lost property from the east.
Yeah.
To make a much cleaner use of that lot area than it had been in the past, particularly along the south line. Because the lease area moved south, then the access easement needed to be re-described because it had it going north of that subdivided lot to property line. Now it goes to that line, and so we get two new legal descriptions that need to be amended for the purposes of that lease.
So the amendment is just...
This little document does.
Yeah, the amendment is just changing lease area.
It's changing the easement bounds, legal description of the lease area, and then changing the legal description of the access easement to accommodate the change in the legal description of the lease area.
Oh, there you go.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does, yeah.
An estoppel doesn't come into this anywhere.
Right, good, good. Okay. Do I have a motion to amend the lease for Mountain Solar?
You want to approve the agreement that is the amendment to the lease, authorize and direct the mayor and clerk to sign it.
Okay, okay, do we have a motion to approve the amendment?
So.
Second.
Further discussion? Andrea, vote. Deanna, roll call, vote, please.
Councilor Baker.
Baker.
Baker. Did you say yes? Okay, sorry. Mayor Bane.
Yes.
Councilor Quinn.
Yes.
Councilor Scalisi.
Yes.
Councilor Baker.
Yes.
Okay, we have that motion approved. Moving on to finance.
Okay, I'd like to make motion to approve city expenditures from October fourteenth through the twenty eighth of two thousand nineteen in the amount of, there's a change, in the amount of two hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. In the extra paper that you got, there's a revision on the bill, and that reflects the lesser amount and the correct amount.
Okay, we have motion approved. Do we have a second? Discussion? Roll call, vote, please.
Councilor Baker.
Yes.
Councilor Scalisi.
Yes.
Councilor Quinn.
Yes.
Councilor Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Bane.
Yes. Okay, moving on to the sixth B, department heads review capital improvement request requests. I shall, Joanne, starting.
I'll go ahead and give a quick rundown of how this all works, and, Joanne, are you up first or is Erica up first?
No, Erica.
Okay. So this is another step of about four different steps in putting together the city budget. And, you know, previously, you guys have all received a line item request and a little bit of other information. We always ask that when you get these little blocks of information for putting the budget together, if you have any questions, given myself, Joanne, or Dee is the interim city clerk right now, till we have one selected, just send us a quick email if you have any questions, or come by and visit with any questions in regards to these capital requests. Now, keep in mind that the department heads are gonna just give a quick synopsis of what exactly is their request. And still, in the next few weeks, I'll be reviewing all the requests, and I'll actually be condensing those down, taking some out of there. So it's more of a wish list of everything that each department is wanting at this point in time. But we'll make it to a smaller list, and Joanne will be handing out prior to the budget a list of the projects in total on the spreadsheet, and then she'll put down which ones I've approved already, which ones I have not approved. But really, that's all pending your final approval as council. So remember, we're just giving you little blocks at a time because the entire budget's a lot to absorb in one night. So it really does help us if any of the questions, concerns are addressed well before Joanne puts her budget books together for you guys. It'll really streamline that process. So we're gonna start with, anything else, Joanne?
No.
Yes.
The numbers are returns, we've got the right answers.
Yep. So we'll start with Derek, the chief boss, and he'll start off, and he'll let you know which page to be on so he can kind of give you a quick rundown of what each of those items are. Don't worry, it's not gonna take two or three hours. You know, we're hoping in about thirty minutes to run through all of these, and like I said, any questions, just send me an email.
Okay.
I am more optimistic than that thirty minutes. I will be quick, stop if you have any questions, please. I'm gonna start on page two, which is just a computer replacement program. That's for in-office computers, not computers in the cars, just updating the current technology. Jumping to page four is police vehicles. That's replacing two vehicles in our fleet. My oldest car is from two thousand and ten, and it's in dire need of going away. And we had a car that was stolen in an accident this year that would replace that car as well. Jumping to page six, this is the police taser program. Currently, we have five tasers department-wide. Three of those are running on obsolete technology. They can't update them, they can't replace them, basically can't use them. Two of them will be obsolete at the end of this year. This is going to the latest greatest program with taser, which is a lease agreement. They know how to sell tasers at all. So this should be a five-year lease, giving every officer and the animal patrol officer code enforcement of the taser. And that includes all the training, hardware, batteries, everything you go. That's all I got.
And is there maintenance on the tasers that covers, is covered under?
Yes, sir. And so if they come out with a newer taser, in that five years, we get to upgrade it automatically, break them, whatever, that's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Chief. What took so long? Yeah.
It's a little worse.
Lance is not here this evening, so I'll go over the items that he has. On page sixteen, we'll start out with the cemetery utility vehicle. This is a utility vehicle for the cemetery, and there's scheduling problems, and some he would like to request to be one of those, and it's twenty-one thousand five hundred for that. The campground upgrade, as you all know, this year we put in a new kiosk, and we've also put in a new kiosk to have Wi-Fi out there. The next step that they're wanting to do is to have some engineering done on the campground to upgrade it, to make it larger. And it is, and they're also wanting to upgrade the sewer hookups and the electrical services. It is currently, this year you may recall, we increased the cost of that, and they included it the first night at twenty-five, and we are seeing a significant revenue from that that I'll probably point out during the vet process.
Yeah, it's been busy enough that if we improve it and make it larger, we get more revenue.
Right. Well, and, yes. You know, that's been on a, this year it's been on a honor system of people pulling in there and spending that one night. Sometimes it's the weekends, but a lot of times we'll get them here on Monday morning or the next morning, and they will pay for their free, as my say. That kiosk should be up and running within the next thirty days, I believe, depending on credit card approval, and it should be moving forward.
I appreciate that. Where, which way is the expansion gonna go?
I believe in the bullpen area.
In the bullpen, south?
Yeah. And on page eighteen, North Colorado Avenue out there by Wendy's and Superior is that one strip. They're proposing to put, replace that strip with aged cobblestones with concrete so that they don't have so much manual maintenance of pulling weeds and the trees and all of that type of stuff out there. So this would be a cost-saving design, and it's for fifty thousand to do the whole project. But over time, it would hopefully make for itself.
Could you do decorative concrete?
He has talked about decorative concrete, and then like possibly, and there's eight knockouts in the center of the median for trees or bushes. And he's also looking for three to four-foot holders that he could also put in there to make it decorative and look really nice.
Holders are great traffic control devices.
Yes, sir.
Page nineteen is to replace the park's John Deere Gator. They're wanting to replace the two thousand and four John Deere Gator with a new small utility vehicle. It served the parks well, but it's getting lots of hours on it. And it's used mostly by the person who takes care of flower beds in the various parks, City Hall, and downtown. And there are some of these items that he's going to be asking, Joss will need him for some assistance, but I'm not exactly sure which ones. Page twenty is his biggest project that he has, and wants to resurface the swimming pools. That's to resurface the swimming pool, he wants to sandblasting the entire pool area, to rock concrete and apply a colored concrete pourifier. That total project cost is two hundred and thirty thousand, and he is going to be asking Joss will need him for one half of that project so that we would have fifty-seven thousand from the conservation trust, and fifty-seven thousand from the general fund. The next item is his park cemetery tractor, that would be replacing the nineteen ninety-seven Massey tractor that's used in the parks of the cemetery currently. That tractor is twenty-two years old. Page twenty-two is to upgrade the campground security, and this is, they would like to actually install camera, security cameras and security lighting for out there at the campground. And that's nine thousand.
So the security cameras would come to the police department, or where would they?
It says install security cameras and security lighting due to vandalism and unpaid uses on the campground. Security camera system would help them stop this activity. Could be mounted to the credit card payment kiosks, the dump station water fillers, and outside of the restrooms. Does not say.
How it feeds or...
How it feeds.
Security cameras are usually just internal, you know, they don't go to a monitor system, a mole sensor system. And if you detect something out there, then you can review the footage that's been recorded in the camera.
Lance has a security camera up at the golf course currently that it runs, and then like the next day, he can go back through and watch it, or in his office, if he happens to be there, he can watch the activity that is going on up in the restaurants. So I'm assuming it's unimpressive with that. His final item is on page twenty-three, and that's for the replace the irrigation system clocks for the Memorial Park, Eddie Park, Pioneer Park, J.C. Building in the cemetery. The current company, which is Signature, they basically went out of business, and so he has no way of getting parts. And so he is looking at new clocks to be installed in two thousand and nineteen, and he's requesting fifty percent of the cost for Joss will need him for this project as well, I know for sure. And this project's total was at fifty-eight thousand. And that's on the checklist.
Okay, thank you.
Now, the nature of Dale's work has a much bigger...
There are several deposits, departments, so...
Right.
Okay, we're gonna start off with the street department. We're looking at replacing the nineteen ninety-nine freightliner dump truck. As you may remember, we had already went out for bids, you already approved the bid, however, there was some problems with budgeting. And because of supply issues, mainly the United Awkward strike, this thing, we've been told that we will not take delivery until after the first year. So with consultation with finance, we just decided, even though it's been bid out, it's been approved, we're gonna resubmit it as a capital improvement project for point one. The next item will be for the street department as well, this will be for the water truck. Our current water truck's thirty-four years old, it's, we're constantly working on it. One of the bigger issues is that very few people within our department have a six-shift license, CDL license. So we can only, there's only very few people within our department that can actually utilize that water truck. And so what we would be doing is getting a, one that would have an automatic transmission, so any water carers could actually use it.
Thirty-four years old.
Thirty-four years old, yes.
I'll tell the taxpayers that.
Well, it means like thirty-four-year-old finance liability, yes, so. Next item is an infrared heater, that's an asphalt heater, and I'm sorry, it wasn't as clear as it needed to be in the subscription. What the intent here is, is use infrared heater, it's a four-by-eight foot heater that we put over potholes where you see the gator packing, you see potholes occurring. And if the subgrating of the base is not bad, we're having to cut out, tear out these potholes, and then take and replace the whole thing. What this will allow us to do is to reuse the existing asphalt by heating it up, adding some sort of rejuvenator, and a little bit of additional asphalt rolled back out. This is a process that has been used successfully on a large scale. In fact, we plan on looking at that in some of our streets in the future on a much larger scale. The county's using it, the city board is using it, State of Colorado's been utilizing this process here as well. The nice thing about this is we don't have to wait until springtime and the asphalt has opened up that we get out there repairing some of these potholes occurred during the off-season. And that way they don't continue to grow and get bigger and bigger. Next item will be for the water fund, and this is water tank painting. We should really actually repaint these water tanks on a ten, fifteen-year schedule. Even though we painted it and sandblasted it, it's good coating, eventually you'll get some corrosion, it gets underneath that protective layer, and then it starts eating away at the tank. And so this is, it's about due, our oldest tank was done in two thousand and five, so that puts us on that fifteen-year rotation.
Dale, a question on that, Monty had shown me the water tanks out there. Do we, the setup that we get in the bottom of those tanks, is that something that we can really clear out when we paint those tanks?
No, no, that's something that we are looking at, also wanting to increase the frequency of cleaning out those tanks at least one every five years.
I see, okay, yes, yes.
And it gives us an opportunity to inspect a lot more than currently.
Is one of our tanks used operational or the other's a backup?
No, they're using, they're using tannin.
They are used to tannin, okay.
In the winter time, we don't necessarily have the need for both tanks because the water demand is down, but in summertime, we definitely have the need.
Okay, okay.
Next item will be water fund, vehicle purchase. This is a purchase of a small four-by-four utility vehicle, not unlike the condos or mules that we talk about. I know this is a recurrent request from the water department. Its main use would be to go out to the wellfields in order to minimize the damage we're dealing to the perky grasses out there and the sandals. Would also use to check the depths of our monitoring wells and other activities, instead of trying to take four-by-four pickup out there all the time. Next item will be water fund, be a pickup truck replacement. We try to rotate these out, we have one currently that's starting to require more and more maintenance as someone goes on. And so this is just a vehicle rotation. Next item will be computer replacement. This, of course, if you look at the requests, you'll see that some of this is projected out to twenty twenty-four. We try to rotate out our equipment, and in this particular case, this particular request is just for our PCs that we utilize to do our day-to-day operations, this is not the main controller of our system. That's given for twenty twenty-four, just as, so everyone is aware, that after January of twenty twenty, when it was seven, it was always supported by Microsoft. And we have obligations and responsibility to make sure we have our current software, so we're not opening up vulnerabilities with our network. This would also include some of the legacy software that we utilize with our existing setup. Next item is water fund, and that is water meter replacement and meter reading equipment upgrade. The last time that we upgraded our meter reading equipment was in two thousand and nine, and so it's starting to get to where we're having troubles at times getting the handheld wands to link up to the readers. And so it's just time, I mean, it's eleven years out of a system, they actually run Windows XP operating system underneath, that's how old they are. So, and then we're also looking at upgrading the meters to radio, radio reading. That way we can kind of, right now, we're, it seems like we're always stretched for manpower by having to radio read instead of taking two or three days to read meters throughout the city of Rush, having to go around each meter visually. We can just drive through the streets and then pay them for fees. Also, our meters have, are at least seventeen years old, and contrary to popular belief, meters do not go faster, they only go slower. And so, when you get a seventeen-year-old meter, it's not accurately calculating how much water is actually passing through that. The newer meters are quite different, they're more like a magnetic flow meter, there's no moving parts, so there's nothing to worry about, so. Next last item here will be from the water fund, and this is to replace a water main. It's a one-hundred-plus-year-old vintage water main in three to five hundred block of Edison Street. It's a one-hundred-plus-year-old drainage water main in three to five-hundred block of Edison Street. As you are aware, we are looking at having, uh, CDOC come through and resurface US three-four in twenty twenty-one. And it makes very little sense to keep antiquated utilities under, uh, what's going to appear to be a very nice roadway. So that will be the replacement of that water main. Next item is going to be for the trash and garbage fund, and that is to replace the trash truck compactor, very much like the nineteen ninety-nine pickup truck. Again, supply issues, supply chain issues, United Awkward's strike has put this. Uh, last item I've been told, this, this has already been bid out, we've already approved the bid, however, we will not be taking delivery until twenty, until the last part of January twenty twenty. And so this is just put back into the system, so it reflects that it was purchased in twenty twenty. Next item will be, uh, trash and garbage fund as well, it's backup generator. As you're aware, we moved our solid waste facilities out to the Russian Agri Park. Uh, very large doors, got them upgraded when we first was re, um, was upgrading the shop. And this, over the last year, when we had, uh, both, uh, the tornado and other issues, we found that the doors were very difficult to get open, at least high enough in order to get these, the trash trucks out of there. So we're gonna purchase a backup generator so we can operate at least the doors and be able to continue on with business. Moving on to the wastewater fund, uh, we have some monopodal water pumps. We use a portion of our effluent for our discharge water in order to run, uh, wash down water within the plant. And this is just, it's just been used and it just needs to be replaced. Uh, we've already had to replace portions of, uh, the one pump this year. So if one's going out, the other one's not too far along. Uh, next, we're looking at self-cleaning biosolids filter, biosolids pipeline. Uh, we current, our current biosolids application site, uh, is at wastewater plant, and it's very labor-intensive to have to go out there and fill up a tank and then spread it accordingly. And so what we're wanting to do is much like what the dairies do in this area, is utilize our pit for the application of the biosolids, and this would allow us to do that. Next item is wastewater fund and storage sheds. Over the next couple of years in twenty twenty as well as twenty twenty-one, we want to build some storage sheds. Currently, we do not have sufficient storage for a lot of the equipment that we have down at the wastewater plant. We're having load and man buildings that are, that are fairly aggressive in terms of, uh, the environment, the access or such. And so this would kind of clean up the areas a little bit because we're not trying to store everything in every little pigeon hole we can find. But that is one of the weaknesses in the wastewater plant's lack of storage. Next item in this wastewater fund is explosion-proof heater replacement. Uh, the current heaters we have, uh, have just been failing. Uh, they, they have a life cycle on them, and they're at the end of their life cycle. And so we're looking at a multi-year replacement of these heaters. We're gonna replace two this year, they're already in the process of being delivered. And then we're looking at doing, uh, four more in, in twenty twenty as well as twenty twenty-one. So if we're full of six heater replacements throughout the year. Next item is wastewater fund as well, and this is instrumentation, instrumentation prone replacement. This wastewater plant operates, uh, and relies very heavily on instrumentation. And as such, uh, these as well have a shelf life and they're starting to fail. And so we want to be able to replace that over the next couple of years as well. Then we have wastewater fund, replacing the solids handling pump. And the pumps that we have, again, just like the non-potable pump and the heaters and much of everything else, it's, it's fine. They've, they've reached the end of life and it's time to replace them. So we're looking at ten thousand dollars to replace some of these, uh, solid handling pumps in the year of twenty twenty. Next item is going to be stormwater, and this is going to be the installation of highway thirty-four manholes. This was actually slated for twenty nineteen. However, because everything, because of CDOC's schedule, got pushed back one more year, I'm just recycling this request a little bit. And just, uh, so you're aware, the Edison Street stormwater lines between Race Street and down by Fresh Shoes, they have no manholes in them. There's absolutely no way to clean them, we have no idea what their conditions are. We don't know what their capacities are anymore simply because they can't inspect them. So by putting in manholes will be able to restore some of that capacity and maintain them appropriately. And then finally with the stormwater fund, we are looking at a purchase of a mower. This is a m- a mower, this is an all-train mower. Uh, this mower, uh, actually will allow us to maintain stormwater ponds in a much more effective manner than we currently do. As we, as our current procedures are, is we can only mow the tops of the, the stormwater ponds. We don't have the ability to mow the slopes on the inside. And, uh, it has tended to become a bit of a weed problem. With weeds, you're gonna have mosquitoes and everything else. And this will allow us to mow on a thirty-eight percent slope, so without endangering personnel. And so we'll be able to better, uh, maintain these ponds, keep the excessive weed growth down, and, uh, make it look nice. This will be a fifty-fifty split between, say, the General Fund and the stormwater funds as well. Because the, the street department does have some areas that we don't know simply because of the slopes and presents a hazard to operate. That's it.
Thank you, Dale. Tyler.
Right. Uh, this is forty-five and forty-six of the two requests in my neck of the woods. Number one is, uh, the update to the Comprehensive Plan and Land Use Code. Uh, City Council did put it as a priority for this next year to look at our comp plan, uh, consider long-term planning. And so the cost, a hundred thousand dollars, we're looking to get half of that through grant funding by DOLA. And then the second one is for the airport runway overlay. Uh, this may actually get pushed back a couple more years, but this project itself, uh, Monty and I were talking about shuffling a couple things out there long-term. The reason being, CDOC just got funding again for the Aeronautics Division, Division, and they're trying to catch up for all the previous years that they haven't been able to put money into the projects. And so the next couple of years are already booked as far as what we want to put the money toward. And so we might push that out a little bit further, but nonetheless, we can start budgeting for our portion on that.
Thank you. Thank you, Tyler. Phil, I must be doing the fire department, too.
So Ted has, um, two items on the list this year, uh, starting on page forty-eight. He has the, to replace the nine-ten and nine-twenty-one with the rescue pumper. Um, one of these is the rural fire, or the other one's the city. We are proposed, it's gonna cost roughly seven hundred thousand for this, uh, pumper. We have requested two hundred and eighty thousand, which is forty percent of the total grant from DOLA. And then the remaining four hundred and twenty thousand, the city will take three-quarters of that, three hundred and fifteen thousand, and the rural fire district has agreed to do a hundred and five thousand. The other item on their list is the kitchen meeting room and water damage repair model. Um, I believe that they may have already possibly started this project, but if not, they will do it, would like to do it in two thousand and twenty. It's roughly thirty-one thousand. The kitchen and the meeting room have some damage due to an old roof leak. And so, and they've also discovered mold behind that failing drywall. So they need to remodel that, get out the mold and clean it up. And I think they're looking at also putting in some different kitchen inter-, uh, uh, commercial kitchen equipment as well.
Okay, on page fifty-one, um, we have the Quiet Zone Phase Two study. And we started that process this year, but it's gonna roll into the next year. And this year, we're only gonna use maybe a thousand dollars, and next year it's gonna go up because we'll get more into the engineering piece of it. And also, in the next few months, we're also gonna have our consultant come in and give a presentation to council on what direction we're gonna go with the Quiet Zone. Go to page fifty-two, airport north access easement. Um, we've had this in the budget, just in case we ever get to getting another access point on the north side of the airport. We'd like to get that someday. Not a high, high priority, but if the opportunity ever comes up, we wanna jump on as soon as we can. The break area improvements, this is the, the break area in the back of, uh, of the front desk area, and, um, it's not necessarily just for the break area, but also as we look at reconfiguring our office space, it might be developing office space at the same time. Go to page fifty-four, um, new telephone system, self-explanatory. Ours is years and years old, and we're looking now that we're going to a faster internet provider that, uh, we feel that we might be looking at phones that are over the internet lines versus the typical phone lines. And so, um, as we go through the process, we'll get more information and counsel on that. Um, but it's in the budget for this upcoming year. Um, council chambers HVAC replacement. We have one older unit that we're kinda keeping our eye on, and so just in case that one does go down, uh, we'll be replacing that HVAC unit. And last item on page fifty-six is council chambers update. We've slowly been making changes to the council chambers. Um, temporary hold since Andrea left, but we'll pick that up here in the near future. And we'll probably roll into next year some of those improvements more into the council chambers. That.
Okay, moving on to number seven, Stafford's joint.
I have a couple items this evening. Um, first of all, as I was, well, actually Derek pointed it out to me. In your package, you received my financial status report. But it was August instead of September, so I gave you the wrong one, you got it twice. I will, if you need me or want me to email it to you sooner, I'll email them to you. Otherwise, I'll just put it in the next packet, when we have the next packet, if that's okay. And I apologize for that. Um, then the other thing is that we did receive our severance tax and federal mineral lease money in September. Severance tax was, and the two combined was ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and eight dollars that we received. Last year, we received thirty-one thousand, four hundred and forty-one, about forty-seven dollars. So that's an increase over last year of sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty, and actually seventy-seven thousand more than what I had budgeted. Because with that one, it fluctuates up and down all the time, and you never know what you're gonna get, so I feel very concerned with that. The other item is to remind council that the budget retreat is November the thirteenth, and we've kind of set it up, the time that we're gonna need to email.
Okay.
Okay?
That's it. Thank you, Joanne.
On that last point of Joanne's, that time, anyone have any issues with starting like around five-thirty?
What's the anticipated, uh?
Uh, two hours.
It takes us somewhere between two and three hours depending on how many questions are, uh...
Tell us November thirteenth?
Mm-hmm, it's a Wednesday.
I'm okay with five-thirty. Others?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay. Thank you, Joanne. Please chief Derek.
A few things this evening. Um, just a brief update on the weather side of the discussion. I have two, uh, updated quotes. One is for fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and sixty-two cents, and that is to replace our existing system, uh, and all the hardware that goes with it. The second quote from the same company is seventy-two thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and eighty cents, and that is updating the existing system as it stands, but with backup batteries and, uh, solar charging or battery maintenance capabilities. So those are the two pri- prices, um, and they're coming out, I just heard this afternoon, on November seventh for a site visit at ten-thirty a.m. I'll be meeting in my office, you are all welcome to attend it. He can explain all this cool stuff further than I, so if you have questions, come there. Um, brief update on the Jake Brake or engine braking ordinance. We were originally going to talk about that tonight, I tabled that, I got some more, uh, ordinances on Friday that I like to look up far better than what we have, and I haven't had a chance to get that to both to interview yet, so. And then the last update I have is on the JAG funds for twenty nineteen, which we were awarded the JAG grant this year for creating the drug task force. Um, the state of Colorado on October twenty-second filed a lawsuit against the federal government involving the twenty-eighteen funds, which are supposed to be dispersed this year. Um, pending the results of that lawsuit, the twenty-nineteen funds are all on hold. So once the lawsuit is finished, the funds will go out, but they have no idea when that's going to be. We're still approved, we just don't have the money until the lawsuits are...
So the formation of that task force might be put back as well, okay.
That will be put back until we get the funds, okay.
Okay.
And then the only other thing I have is there's a winter storm coming, so just a reminder, just stay warm, stay safe, drive slow.
Thank you, chief. Community development, Tyler. Okay, public works director Dale.
The only thing I have right now is, uh, to, uh, follow up with what chief has said about a storm coming in. We're expecting anywhere between six and eight inches currently, is what the forecasts are. Uh, just to let you know that we will have personnel out on the streets and, uh, just reminding everybody to keep your vehicles off the street if you can. That helps us, uh, remove snow, much more than anything, so. But we're, we're watching that very closely, and we will have crews out.
Yeah, that's just a question.
Yeah.
You know, with the, um, dropping of all the leaves and, and not having a chance to get them all flaked out, how does that affect your storm sewer and, and the drainage on the snow and...
We send crews out on a regular basis in the mornings to clean the leaves up off the catch bases.
I was referring to below the catch base, and I mean, I look at mine, and right under the, the grill, it is packed with leaves.
Right, typically, typically, our, we do have a procedure where we go out and we lift those grates, and in the winter times is when we actually vacuum these things out. However, winters come just a little bit earlier than what our schedules. So, uh, that is one of our routine managements involved, is to vacuum those out.
Before the snow gets, yeah.
Supposed to. If the snow's falling.
Thank you, Dale.
Yeah, that's one of the things I want to point out, too, is, is I've seen a lot of people with their leaf blowers blowing their leaves right into the streets and trying to caution people that, you know, that, that could cause problems with our storm drainage. We don't want people putting their leaves in the street. Uh, we pick up, we pick up leaves for a full month in November, and that's the way we need to take care of it, so.
Okay, uh, Dustin Bright is Matt. Okay. Uh, deputy city clerk Deanna.
Um, Nadine, uh, me and Joanne's, uh, kind of talked about the counseling for the eleventh of November. That is a, uh, holiday.
Veterans.
Yes, and we don't work that day, what do you have on your mind?
What day is that?
It's a Monday.
Monday, November eleventh.
Uh, I can't remember what we did last year, did we go try for Tuesday or something?
Yeah, my recommendation would be to cancel it, and if any city business comes up where we need to get something in from the council, reschedule it for Tuesday. And then just realizing that Wednesday we also have a, the budget, budget retreat, too, but, um...
So we'll play it by ear and tell.
Yeah, if we have things, we might have a suit come in from Verizon. There's a few different things that might be on for that night. So that works for council, we'll kind of tentatively plan for that Tuesday. Joanne?
And if you don't have it, I'll still need finance to come in and assign all of the bills on Tuesday, so that we can...
Okay, we can do that, sure. Okay. Anything else, Deanna? Okay, the city administrator, Monty.
If you're gonna cancel, you need a motion.
Well, are we, do we wanna, well, yeah, let's formally cancel it unless... Okay, ask a motion.
I think we have to cancel on Monday, November eleventh, me, unless there is a reason that we have it, we'll have it on Tuesday, tomorrow.
Okay, we have a motion to cancel Monday. Tuesday is a backup, we have a second discussion. Deanna will call, please.
Counselor Becker.
Yes.
Counselor Baker.
Yes.
Counselor Scalisi.
Yes.
Mayor Baines.
Yes.
Counselor Quinnly.
Yes.
Okay, the city administrator, Monty.
Okay, a few items, one is, um, one of the items in our packet was a rescue pumper for the volunteer firefighters, um, and a project that we're looking at funding along with the rural fire district board. Uh, next week is gonna be the DOLA hearings, um, for those energy impact funds and the grant. And so I'm gonna be planning on attending that. I think it's Tuesday or Wednesday of next week. And I'll also invite the fire chief, if he wants to go, and/or a member of the rural fire district board. Um, it's up in Alamosas, so kind of a long drive, but we've always had a history of being very successful in those grants, so hopefully...
So I'm hoping that, you know, it works again, um, in our favor. Uh, the other thing is, just be aware, um, there is a potential of the Verizon special use permit coming back in front of city council. And that is for the Verizon tower out at the cemetery. Um, Tyler will bring that forward when they're ready on that one. And then last thing was, um, city clerk process. Um, Mayor Baines is going to be kind of fine-tuning things over the next few weeks on how he's going to set up the interview process. But as of closing, we had forty-five applicants through Indeed, um, applying. Then we also had eighteen applications that were either emailed directly or dropped off at the prime desk. So pretty far, it's pool of applicants for that. That's all I have.
Okay, uh, I'm going to ask Matt, Matt did a lot of work on our heritage day celebration. Could you give us a update or a report on how that went?
Evening, Councilman Mayor. Um, yes, this Saturday, uh, we celebrated the one hundred and thirty-fifth, uh, anniversary, the incorporation of City Brush, um, with a variety of historical activities and delicious food. Um, opened it today with, uh, tours, uh, local buildings, um, and places in Brush. Uh, actually, it was incredibly successful beyond what we were anticipating. Um, then, uh, provided a bus, uh, and.
Thanks, Derek, for the ease of.
Yeah, and, and, uh, they did walking tours downtown, it was awesome. Um, the city provided a community lunch for people who wanted to come eat some food. And Peter Sisneros, a chef at, uh, the hospital, provided chili that was very delicious and we have a lot of leftovers. So if you guys want chili, just hit me up, I'll get you some chili. The, uh, the historic preservation listening session later in the evening was also successful, it was a good time. And then the volunteer dinner, um, in the evening, I think we had seventy-eight confirmed of the RSV, RSVPs, we planned about a hundred people. And I believe we had pretty much sixty to seventy or so. Uh, I didn't do the exact head council, I was there, but, um, we provided a, city again, provided a chuck wagon dinner, which I had actually never seen in real life. It was a lot of fun. A gentleman named John Schaffner came out and cooked down wood-fired grills and did some delicious meats and beans and peach cobbler. Uh, we celebrated the volunteers and the community. Uh, it was, uh, it was a very successful day and it was fun to be a part of. For me, I'm, you know, uh, I've only been here ten months or so and I'm celebrating one hundred and thirty-five years, so it's really a huge reward.
Can you, can you update council on the new member of your family that had happened as a result of the heritage?
Sure, um, boo. Yeah. Is she Maddie? I'm not going to. Okay. Well, um, I, uh, yeah, I adopted a cat. I hopefully I didn't steal somebody's cat, but I, uh, I took a cat home. I don't know what, this, I named the cat Gus. It's, it's a cute little cat that I found, um, at the fairgrounds, it just followed me everywhere. And I was like, oh, you're coming home, so I got a cat now. I wasn't planning on talking about that.
I think that's human interest stories.
Where's the paper, right?
Where's the paper? All right, all right, thank you, Matt. Okay, moving on to mayor council reports, anybody have anything they'd like to report? Heath?
Yeah, I'd like to thank officers, uh, Quick and Officer, Officer Brown. Uh, they came over to the middle school a couple of times and in the last month, and have helped with some behavior issues. And, uh, truly, really thank them and just the professionalism that they showed when they were there, they did a good job. And we definitely need the police officers to come to our buildings and, and help us out at times, so. We just want to pass it on this year.
Pass it on.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
I guess I mentioned, uh, with the city clerk's position coming open, uh, I would anticipate, uh, going into executive session for interviews with councilmen and candidates. So probably looking at a special meeting, but I can't give you a date right now, so when that'll be, we'll be putting something together in the near future here.
All right, see, next up, uh, the executive session, do I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss a potential water project?
Statutory citation, please.
Oh, okay, yeah, Monty give it to me.
Statutory citation for this is twenty-four dash six dash four oh two dash four subsections E. CRS Determining Positions Relative to Matters That May Be Subject to Negotiations, Developing Strategy for Negotiations, and Instructing Negotiators.
I know we go into executive session for what you just said.
All right, that's good enough. Do we have a second?
Segment.
Okay, discussion?
Roll call over, please.
Councilor Baker.
Yes.
Councilor Quinlan.
Yes.
Councilor Schlesy.
Yes.
Councilor Becker.
Yes.
Mayor Baines.
Yes.